The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Elise Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission Meeting, November 18th, 2020.
And then I have Jason Lee just in the.
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Could you do me a favor and speak up just a little bit? I'm just really hard with the mask.
Yeah, but the mask, it really muffles a lot of light. On the issue of surrendering the right-of-way, that's what I wanted to speak on.
Okay.
It's sort of here out by Mineral Heights.
Okay.
And that part of property easement there.
Could you state your name for the right-of-way?
We're hearing after talk from Ida's travel agents at Holy Creek Foot. And we are opposed to that maker. What I understand this easement was granted to county in 1983 or later. And we were opposed to surrendering easements like this. We worked long and hard to maintain the green trail and access to public lands. Granted, the right-of-way in question is meaning to deny access to Ward Mountain Loop system that we have worked hard to get through the speed, speed hill connector trail through the Forest Service. Also, we've worked for two and a half years and two mayors with the city to get legal routes, third town access to public lands. And this road, the right-of-way, can be accessed from two points on lot cat road which is a legal, legal act or route through the city of Ely. And right in the middle of this piece of property, that way, can go out. That access. And that's, that's one of the only ones on the west side of the valley to access the Ward Mountain Loop. And as you well know, if you lived here for any length of time, we've seen closures of trails and access to public lands through the O.R.A. and Forest Service. We've been working with them and that's swung down quite a bit. We've been trying to open up some trails. And I just hate to see White High County become a party to closures to access the public lands. And it took us, like I said, two and a half years working on two separate ordinances for two mayors, three years to get this connector trail established. And this one, this route, aren't access to that connector trail. But our club is opposed to the sack and turning all the public access routes to private parties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm disappointed in you, there's still no sound system. It isn't that I haven't told you, it isn't that the county doesn't have a sound system that can be used. You need to take care of those that have difficulty in hearing. I can barely hear Mr. McIntosh, let alone some of you. And I intend to interrupt you when I can't hear you. This is crazy. There's no need for this. The city and the county paid, while the county paid for a good sound system, you failed to have it installed. Mr. Chairman, the area around New Charter School is littered with old concrete, old fencing, another degree which is a safety hazard. The area is not fenced, there are no warning signs of construction debris and no trespassing signs. Many people ride hip bikes and they get leaves in that area and debris poses a safety hazard. Let me remind you, when Lenx tore down the old annex that crossed from the library, there was a failure to fence off construction debris. The young lady was tubing in that area after a snowstorm and hit that snow covered debris causing her major injuries. This commission has an obligation, the city accidents do not happen and that construction areas are fenced off and cleaned up afterward after construction is done. That's not being done. Mr. Chairman, curb button and sidewalk standards are not being adhered to. You people are selectively enforcing them a lot. I've informed the mayor and the city council numerous times. The mayor and your building inspectors state that those standards apply to subdivisions only. They're dead wrong. Your two new subdivisions, Mountain District, not even come close to complying. The standards were set for the community as a whole, not targeted to one given area. And then when you do have a new development, you're not adhering to it. You need to correct that problem. Your building inspector needs to go. Recently held up a project on Stevens Avenue stating that the home needed an annihilation permit. I've not heard of that. If it exists, why are others not required to get it? You people need to stop selectively enforcing the law, rules and regulations or resign. You're hindering the growth of this community. We're not going up, folks. We're stagnant. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item A, you're to consider the approval of parcel map to merge and re-subdivide the parcels. The item, the agenda item does not clear your state what the size of the parcel will be. I don't know if it's one acre, five acres, or two and a half acres. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item that you are to consider, excuse me, B, that you tabled that. Mr. Chairman, I want to remind the planning commission, the city building today does not address the city code violations by previous and present members of the planning commission as well as some of the city council and county commissions. They need to comply with city codes that they have formulated and adopted or resigned. The city building White High County cannot selectively enforce law. They have to be compliant with federal law and for the age.
Time, 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 sir.
I can't read.
Time. Move to item A. Discretion for possible action, approval of a parcel map to merge and re-subdivide the parcels. Property is section southeast one quarter, section twenty-three, township sixteen north, range sixty-five east, and section southeast one quarter, northeast one quarter, east one half, southeast one quarter, affecting fourteen, township sixteen north, range sixty-three east. General location of the property is Pinwheel Lane, APN zero one zero dash four two two to New Creek, White High County, Nevada, Avenue Andrew and Beth.
Good evening, Greg Merrill with Solaris Land Management. We're presenting the plan. We are proposing to do a four lot parcel map. The total, a total of one hundred and twenty acres. There'll be two ten acre lots, twenty acre lots, and the remainder of the eighty acre lot. So, public access on the ten acre lot is California, so there's no offer dedication or any other, no right-of-ways required for this. So, there's no right-of-way case to the property. Do you have any questions?
Just for the record, all new standing in the vote.
Right. And you're claiming to, you're claiming any interest on this property, right of interest?
This is pretty clear cut.
Yeah.
I have questions that need answering already, so.
Pretty clear cut, yeah.
Can I ask what proposed use is going to be? So, whether I could?
Yeah. I do. And it's that whole area south of Step to Park, that whole, that whole open area.
Where's the hole?
Right.
Park is set up in the south.
Right. Okay. Looks pretty straightforward.
I'll go ahead and make sure.
Okay, we have a motion from Leah to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second of breath. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed. We have a quorum and it's approved.
Thank you.
Questions?
George, I have a question.
I thought.
We talked about.
Yeah. Should we wait for public comment on that?
It's not a public comment, it's a question.
Okay, what, what's your question?
I'd like to know what the size of the lots are proposed, because I couldn't hear it.
Oh, there. There. There are five. Ten acres, ten acres, twenty acres, eighty acres.
Okay, so you're not subdividing the big, okay.
Just these three.
Not the big one.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to just survey data to show how the property is.
Okay.
We have a notification that item B has been structured to agenda that we drew a parcel map to merge and re-subdivide parcels. That is scheduled for another, another date, so we will hear about that later as well. Next, discretion for possible action, approval of recommendations to the White High County Commission on a petition for vacation or abandonment of road or easement. Property of that petitioner would like to abandon the order of APN zero zero five dash one one seven to the four and establish a twenty foot long strip along the southern ground line, block twelve, block fourteen on both streets, and ten foot strip along the left side of the block, plus ten, eleven, twelve, block fourteen of Saval Avenue on the bigger town side. This is Adrian I. Choi.
Good evening, Buzz R. Smith, based in Ely. I believe one of you recently bought closed lots. It was a dream of mine and it's a hard to remember. There are a couple of them that we've done previously, on the highway over there, Elko and South Hill. So, she wants to put an application in there for us, see if we can get that cleaned up. Any questions that you might have? So, but I don't, I mean, I obviously, I don't have an issue with the abandonment off of Elko Street, I mean, because the existing building on the lot closest to, where the Baker Street is already there. I mean, it's already encroached on that easement anyways, and that was abandoned a while ago. And I don't have an issue with that, but I do have, I mean, the, pulling up without actually going out there and looking at things, you know, pulling up on a map and that, and it's the ten-foot easement, is that correct, right there?
Ten-foot abandonment?
Abandonment, I'm sorry. Off of, um, Saval. Yeah, Saval. So, her actually, her house, that basically just covers her house and a little bit more. The fencing that she currently has would still be inside of the, inside of the right-of-way at that. She was asking me to propose it fifteen or twenty, and I just said that I don't think you're going to get that. I believe we're at fifty-foot right-of-way, that would neck us down to a forty-foot right-of-way right through that area. My, my thing is, is I just, you know, I mean, we never know when growth is going to happen in certain areas. And it seems to me that if we keep pushing these boundaries out more and more and more, our roads are jogging all over the place and it makes it very, very difficult to put in anything like curb and gutter or anything that we'd have to require new building. And so I guess that's my biggest concern on that one. I don't like, I don't have a problem with the other one at all, but, but this one, I just don't want to see, you know, this going on with the roads there. In your opinion, is, with what she's asking, is this going to make it fairly symmetrical and not going to interfere at all with future growth? Well, I mean, yeah, it's not to predict the future. Mostly I was just trying to clean up getting her house fully under lots, forcing her house out of the right-of-way. Right. You know, closer, I don't know how long the house had been there. It looks like maybe that was an addition. I'm not sure who allowed it, but, okay. Looks like the access that they're using now probably is a little bit offset from the actual legal right-of-way.
Buzz, how much of the property or the house is not on the property line? Because, because, I mean, I'm looking at it from those pictures that I tried to pull up too, and it looked to me like, looked to me like it was offset a little bit from the property line.
Yeah, there's, you know, like I said, that ten, ten foot of abandonment covers that, a couple of feet. Okay. So, if it goes to fifteen, twenty, that's, that's not going to fly.
Well, I honestly, one of my, one of my biggest concerns is just the fact that that school is kitty-corner directly from that. The school grounds is kitty-corner directly from that.
Correct.
And I, I mean, I don't know, I, I look at that and say, we want the best access to and from schools as much as possible. And I think it's, it's only appropriate to make sure that that's there. I am disappointed in the fact that that was, building was even built. I mean, but I'm sure you see that a lot too in your, in your line of work, for sure. Now, on the same hand, I also struggle with the fact that we're going to possibly give them granted access just because somebody didn't follow the rules in the first place and put the, put the property lines in or set the property lines before they started building.
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah, it, it's obvious, the, it's a tough predicament. We do see it often. Half the garage is a right-of-way, portion of the house is a right-of-way.
How much?
Have you addressed with this one?
Right.
I don't know that you can have to tear that portion of the house down. I mean, I don't know.
How much, how mu, how, how big would that right-of-way be? Because the right-of-way right now, the Saval Avenue is what, twenty feet or?
Fifty.
Fifty feet.
Fifty, we didn't think that.
So, it'd be taking ten feet off of it.
Yeah, we're going down to forty.
So, is, is everything outside of their property line, with the exception of portion of the house, is that all trees?
Trees, there's also fence.
Yeah, the fence shows here, yeah.
Base that fence that runs along the tree line in there, some of the tree canopy is covering that for the, that part of the.
And you really don't know what that portion of the house that's outside of the boundary line?
No, I do.
Contains, is it, is it bedrooms, is it just a spare room, is it storied? You don't know anything about that?
No, I don't know.
That's part of my concern is if we start allowing those little things to keep, get in the right-of-way, then where do we call home?
Right.
I just.
How about square footage? Do you know how much square feet it is over the property line?
Um, I mean, I could figure it out, but I don't have that information currently.
Can I ask how long it's already been set this way?
No, no, I don't have that information as well.
So, the house, she bought the house?
She bought the house and it sounds to me, when I first started doing some work for her, we were going to do some parceling. And I told her, I said, well, you have some encroachment issues going on. And she told me, no, all of that's been abandoned. And I said, please, I can't find any record of abandonment on Saval or Elko. I said, yes, the alley was formally abandoned, a portion along that building, or under frontage on the state round, that had been abandoned, but I cannot find anything that showed that. And the town report agreed that there was nothing that had been formally abandoned. So, wherever she bought it from, sounded like they, yeah, either didn't know or there was miscommunication, you know, because she's pretty upset about her house getting rid of it.
Yeah. Since I've been involved in this so many years, I look at it and I know the same situation happens out in Cherry Creek. People build their home where they want to without, because we didn't have all of these rules back then. They put those homes in and a lot of them were crooked on the property and therefore they encroached on the right-of-way. It's just, and it's, it's hard to say we need to fix all of those and do it and cause issues for the people that have the homes now. But on the other hand, where do we call home?
What, what is the minimum amount we can give her on their? Or just to get the house, uh, hold down her property? I believe it's right around seven feet. About the full encroachment to the edge of the house.
And that would be right at the end of the square footings, basically.
Because I, you know, I'm not for, I mean, I obviously don't want her, any things to happen to her house or anything, obviously it wasn't her fault other than maybe some due diligence about looking into the property lines on there. I mean, that, that can happen, but, you know, I'm just trying to figure out the minimums we can give her to make that satisfied without encroaching too much on, on the, the, yeah, easement there or the.
Sure. That's understandable.
So, you're saying it would be seven feet just to the edge of the house?
Approximately.
Is that house actually a triangle like it looks like or is that just hidden by trees and?
No, I think that's just, that's the canopy of the trees over top of it. It's a square, kind of that.
And, and so approximately ten feet would put it out into those trees.
So, Buzz, I guess my next question too is, as far as utilities go, what are we looking at as far as utilities and where are we looking at them in, in this road? Is there any in this road, do we know of? Is it going to be, you know, I, I don't want to give permission for this and then find out the utilities are running right along, right on our property now. Sure. No, that's, you know, I can't imagine utilities running right through those streets because the trees are missing there or if there are utilities in there. I believe, um, on abandonments, you abandon the road portion of it and reserve the utilities that utilities are existing. Well, again, I, I have a hard time dealing without actually being a hundred percent sure, you know, and I don't want to make a decision and then, Buzz, there is something there. Now, the other thing is, is there anything like, um, storage tanks, you know, heating storage tanks, propane lines, anything like that? The, the propane tank is on Elko Street. Okay, that's it. And we're within the abandonment. Okay. And then the land comes in perpendicular from there to the house. This shows up in the area somewhere. I believe I have it depicted on the exhibit as well.
Yeah, my, my only issue is just future developments. You know, there are lots surrounding this home. And, you know, the issue is, you know, here we are, it's our, after the fact. I would suggest if it's possible, you know, the bare minimum to alleviate that, but anything more than that, I would probably be against just because of, you know, that school is an issue too on the corner. Just future developments is kind of what I'm more interested in, concerned about.
I can agree with that, the, I can agree with the abandonment on Elko because of previously abandoned section that's on there. So, that makes things, you know, evens everything out on Elko. However, again, I, I tend to agree, we have no idea what, what kind of services or so forth are, you know, in that area. I mean, pending any future study on, on that area of Saval.
Does the G.I. group, the G.I. group review this? They would be the expert on whether utilities are out. Yeah. There was a, there was a recording here.
As far as public works says, they felt like it is not a good situation for future road access. The housing already in fact, and Saval, Saval Avenue abandonment will create a jog in that road. Elko Street abandonment will create a consistent width on the portion of Elko Street. But then we're going to be in the same darn boat, I don't know, couple of months, years, maybe on section seven, eight, nine and ten, or seven, eight and nine, that eventually we're going to end up, somebody's going to come in and want to do the same thing because we did the same thing on Elko Street with the abandonment on Elko Street. Now we're saying, well, let's abandon it because we did this. We're in a, we're in a very slippery slope here.
We can't, yeah, we can't create a precedent.
Yeah.
On, on Saval. That, that abandonment can chase itself all the way down Saval.
Do we, do we know who owns those lots, seven, eight, nine? Is it the same owner of lot ten, eleven, twelve?
No, seven, eight, nine, it's a different owner.
Different owner.
Currently, Adrian has ten, eleven, twelve, four, five and six, but I believe she's donated lot four to, I don't remember who she called her. She donated it to somebody. She's basically, yeah, she's a widow. She's trying to disperse these properties and get herself just down to basically lot twelve.
Okay.
There's a tension right now. So, it's a quarter lot with the house on, she's going to give the rest of the lots to her.
So, just to the right of the, the main house structure, there's another structure. Is that?
Small, I don't know where that came out from.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's some, some age on it.
Okay. So, that would be, just so I'm clear, that would be section eleven then? Is that approximately?
I would just assume that. I mean, that would fall into section eleven. I mean, it sounds to me that this time, you know, maybe this is best table until we, I can give you guys some exact numbers on how much is it actually encroaching, how many square foot, and if there are any facilities in there, but if we're going to interfere with, it sounds like you guys are in favor of Elko. Yeah, I mean, I guess there's two ways we can go about it. We can partially approve, we can approve part of it and say, you know, come back and we'll look when you have all the information for the other part. Or we can table the whole entire thing because if we, if we approve part of it, then she's going to have to reapply again, is that correct? So, that would, that would cause more money out of her pocket. It would be easier for us to table the whole issue at this point and just revisit it.